Meeting for, it says February 13th, but I mean February 20th. Oh, I'm gonna figure you out. I'm calling it to order. Everybody can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I think super fans would be...
Super fans lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Where's the flag? Where is the flag?
Okay, you ready? Yeah?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So I would like to get a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
We need to move it, sorry.
There's an amendment.
Yep, we need to amend, yeah, we need to amend the agenda, remove the national recognition of National School Counseling Week to our next meeting since they are not to be here. So can we approve the agenda with that amendment to it?
All right. I move that we approve the agenda with the deletion of, or the move of Part D National School Counseling Week to the meeting in March.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move opposed, we're abstaining, the agenda is approved as modified. Next we have school board appreciation.
All right. So, for those of you who don't know, February is School Board Appreciation Month, so we have a proclamation. Whereas the education of Virginia's school aged children is the foundation upon which economic, social, and intellectual capital of our state is built in, whereas locally elected and appointed school boards play an important and vital role in constitutional republic, and decisions made by local boards of education directly influence instruction in Virginia's public schools, and whereas these decisions affect the present and future lives of children and also set direction to prepare all students to be competitive in a local, state, national, and global 21st century knowledge economy. And whereas local school board members work with parents, businesses, education professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas this year's theme Champions of Opportunity Advocates for Excellence highlights the efforts made by our school board members to create pathways for student achievement and innovation on behalf of all students. And whereas School Board Appreciation Month provides an opportunity to celebrate Virginia's school board members who champion the mission of public education, and now therefore be it, whereas Nelson County Public Schools recognizes the contributions of the state's local school boards to the academic success of its public school students and expresses its sincerest recognition to local school board members, and they focus on the well-being and achievement of children throughout the state. And finally, whereas Nelson County Public Schools recognizes February 2025 as School Board Appreciation Month and encourages local school divisions and community leaders to appropriately recognize our state's dedicated school board members. So on behalf of Nelson County Public Schools, we want to thank you all for everything that you do to advocate and represent our students, staff, and our community. So thank you very much. For those in the audience, each of our schools, as well as central offices, collected some items of appreciation that they wanted to provide, and so enjoy those, they are heartfelt and in many instances personalized, and so continue to just show the appreciation back that you all. In addition to school board appreciation, it is also School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. So Ms. Tammy Cotton, will you please join me up here? They were already up there. All right. No, no. All right, so whereas, oh, you don't have a good view there at all. Okay. Whereas, school board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts. And whereas school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of her, his county and city as may be required by the school board. And whereas, school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media on behalf of the school board and superintendent. And whereas, school board clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours, not you, never, for extra hours attending school board meetings. And whereas, school board clerks help to ensure students achieve their highest potential and provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents. And now therefore, the V S B A Board of Directors does hereby recognize February 17th through the 21st of 2025, the School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So congratulations, thank you so much for everything that you do.
All righty, all righty, Rue, and it's now the One Nelson Awards.
Hold on, I'm picking someone.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so that's going to be you then. Super business. Or super business.
Good try, Taylor.
It was so close, not really. All right, I want to make sure I have all my ducks in a row. January was a big month, so I noticed not everybody was able to make it, and we have a bunch of mugs over here.
Do you want me to help you with the mugs? I'll be at the end.
That'd be fantastic. All right, we're gonna chase this up, yeah. Exactly. All right, so I don't think Isaac was able to make it.
Yes, he was.
Oh, you're right in front of him. Okay, you come join me, please.
Do you want me to come join you?
I would love for you to.
I got you.
I think everybody else would say it really. Oh, okay. It is a little awkward. All right, so everybody, this is Isaac and it's Mazur, right?
Mazur.
Mazur, okay, I started off wrong. Isaac Mazur, he is our student recipient of the One Nelson Award for January. Isaac stopped along 29 to assist a family who was experiencing car trouble. The mother posted a very nice message on social media expressing her gratitude to Isaac for caring enough to stop and help out. The mother mentioned that she felt that they were in a dangerous area of the highway and she felt unsafe, that she could not move the car. The mother then mentioned that he was the first person to stop and check on them. Another man was able to move their car to safety, and it was a great measure of compliment when the mother honors another parent for how they are raising their son. So congratulations. And that his actions are reflective of those efforts. At a time where it is very easy to get caught up in our daily lives or focus on student academic achievement, it is nice to take a moment to recognize important acts of kindness, which I think probably are greater than anything else that we can recognize in giving. These are critical characteristics that often get overlooked but are so important to others in our community. Isaac's actions represent the kind citizenship of behavior that is an asset to any community in a true sense of One Nelson spirit. So I want to say congratulations, thank you so much.
That's a paragraph.
It is. You took care of that.
What's this?
You're right here. This is...
Is it schwag?
It is schwag.
Oh my gosh, am I getting schwag?
Yes, you do.
That feels so special.
Yes, I'm gonna keep it in a little because you don't, I'll break it. But it has One Nelson on it.
I'm not that clumsy, yeah.
Yes, yeah, he's a trip. It's a pure trip.
Okay, I'm gonna take that. Might not have been too long, thank you.
Oh.
That's not bad.
They just cut me there. Cut me deep. So we're gonna come over here and Mr. Ashland, we're gonna take our picture.
Do I need to have it boxed, or you want...
No, I think you should probably do that. All right, so he was our student recipient. We have quite a few of our community recipients who stepped up. Yes, did you have a question? Okay, we'll make sure we get you a picture too, because that could have happened in front of a lot of classmates. I was prepared for that, I was excited about it, but yes. All right, so back in November for the third year, we were able to provide turkeys for each one of our staff members as a way of saying thank you so much for everything that you do. And this year, we kind of had a multitude of community members who stepped up to help us. So the first individual that I want to recognize is Mr. Stephen White from Food Lion, so please come join me. So Food Lion and Loving Street Life, our manager Stephen, supported all of our N C P S Great Turkey Drop, the Great Turkey Drop 2024, by working with N C P S and Food Lion Corporate to obtain turkeys for all N C P S employees. Initially, he worked hard to get these turkeys at a reduced cost. This collaboration was two months in the making and resulted in a lot of happy N C P S staff with a delicious turkey for Thanksgiving. Not only does our Food Lion serve our community throughout Nelson County, but is a great supporter of our employees and students. The effort was truly in the spirit of One Nelson, so thank you so much. We're gonna get you a mug, and then get you this certificate, we're gonna take a picture. Maybe if we come over this way? Please. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
So also, one of, and I'm not sure if they're able to be here, Afton Mountain Vineyards, do you have a representative from Afton Mountain? Afton Mountain was one of the groups from Nelson 151. We have a parent and a representative from Blue Mountain who was able to work with others within that group to contribute and donate that allowed us to help purchase those turkeys. And so Afton was one of those individuals that was able to donate money, so we appreciate that greatly and want to say thank you, because this isn't the first time that they've donated to the turkeys. I remember our first year doing this, they were one of the ones that, and then helped distribute them out to everybody. So I really appreciate the commitment that they made, not only to the community overall, but to our students and our staff, so thank you so much. Thank you. Taylor Smack was one of the originators, and he, from Blue Mountain, Taylor worked with Nelson 151 members to get donations to support the third annual Turkey Drop for our Nelson County Public School employees to receive frozen turkey. So he then coordinated with a lot of these other groups in order to be able to make that happen, and donated some money to the cause, so we appreciate his efforts and thank him very much. He's ever-present in a lot of the things that we do, so we appreciate that support. So thank you, Mr. Smack. Wild Man Dan, we have representatives from Wild Man Dan? No, okay, that's all right. They did reach out, a lot of them said there was a lot going on this evening, and then even a month from now, there's some other event taking place, so it's difficult to get them involved. This is also the second time Wild Man Dan has contributed money to being able to get turkeys for all of our staff. So they've shown up and supported us every time we've needed them to do so, so we want to say thank you to Wild Man Dan, so thank you. Three Notched. Anyone from Three Notched? Nope? Running out of room here. All right, so Three Notched was also individuals. Not only did they help support us for an administrative retreat last summer, but they stepped up again for the turkeys and being able to donate some money, so we appreciate everything that they do for us. Thank you, Three Notched. And Valley Road Vineyards. Valley Road, no? Nope, okay, darn it. So Valley Road is also a second year that they were able to donate them money, but also time in being able to support us and the Great Turkey Drop of 2024, so thank you so much. For January, for the January certified, or sorry, classified group, we kind of did something a little bit unique in that we created a group made up of Patty Morkum and Sharon Aldridge. Well, I didn't create them, but I'm putting them together for this award, so will Patty Morkum and Sharon Aldridge please come up here? They are also known as super pants. So Nelson, Patty Morkum and Sharon Aldridge are self-described super fans, as you can see. However, it is easy to see how well the name describes them. These N C P S super fans can be seen and heard at all types of Nelson County Public School events, from athletic games, theater productions, band and choir performances, fundraisers, and school-based events. The spirit and energy they bring in supporting all things Nelson County Public Schools, especially our students, is amazing. The pride they bring to what they do every day is... You're crying. The spirit and energy they bring is infectious. Both can be heard down the hallway and have positive interactions with their colleagues and students and are visible in every way. Our super fans are greatly appreciated, so we want to say thank you very much. We'll also have another one for you, you get too much. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Muggs are right here. Thank you. All right, so the fourth category for our One Nelson Awards is the certified group. And for this, back in January, we had National, or I'm sorry, Virginia School Principals Week. And so school principals are quite frequently some of the people that do a lot of things behind the scenes, and they spend a lot of time working, not only during the day, but after, after hours, and then having to come in and do some things that aren't always listed under their job description other than all other duties assigned. So we, for the One Nelson Award, because all of them have been nominated nationally multiple times, we want to recognize all four of our principals, which is Kevin Walker from the high school, Scott Malaco from the middle school, Jody Coffey from Rockfish River Elementary, and Heather Coughlin at Ty River. And we want to say thank you to Nelson County Public School Principals. Your leadership, dedication, and vision are at the heart of student success, staff support, and a thriving school community. Through your commitment to building strong relationships and fostering a positive school culture, you create an environment where students, teachers, and families can flourish. Your hard work and service to your schools does not go unnoticed, and we celebrate you for the incredible impact you make every day. We appreciate all that you do, congratulations. So we want to say thank you to all four of our principals who are not able to make it. Okay, and if we take a quick pause, because I gotta find February, so my apologies. Talk amongst yourselves, go ahead. Okay, I'm excited, I'm back at it. Okay, we do know that our first recipient for February, so guys get ready, or go. So Tinley, would you want to join me, please? All right. Okay? All right, so does anybody figure out where Tinley goes to school? Anyone?
Rockfish.
Rockfish, okay. I met Tinley last year, how did I meet you?
I came after school.
Yeah, that's right, after school, okay. Big impression made. All right, so Tinley was nominated under the student category. So Tinley has faced many challenges as a result of her ADHD, but she still strives to do her best. She is the best friend any one person could have and is always willing to help anyone who may need it. She understands her challenges and faces them head-on. We are so proud of her and her work ethic in her classes. So I mean, you work really, really hard and you're great with other people. How do you feel about that? So we want to say congratulations, you got nominated to win this award, and out of everybody nominated for the student category, you won for February, so congratulations. Good things are happening. Okay, so I'm gonna give you that, and then we're gonna step right over here, and we're gonna stand, you see Mr. Ashland right there? We're gonna stand right there, and we're gonna take a picture. Awesome, good job. You guys, wanna take a picture? Next up is our community winner for February for the One Nelson Award, so will Ms. Sarah Turner please, please stand. So Sarah Turner perfectly embodies the spirit of the One Nelson Award through her profound and unwavering commitment to the community. Over the years, she has selflessly volunteered her time to all for her children, and not just those of her children attended. A proud Nelson native, Sarah's dedication is evident in her role in organizing significant events such as the Future Governor's Camp, tailgates, and staff lunches. She carries out these efforts not for recognition, but out of a genuine care and love for her community. Her commitment also includes planning future initiatives to further enhance school spirit and provide ongoing support to the community. Beyond her numerous contributions, Sarah is an amazing person and friend, always ready to lend a hand. Her passion and selflessness truly make her deserving of this honor, reflecting the very essence of what the One Nelson Award represents. So congratulations, thank you for all that you do. You want to bring her back, so you can get a better picture? I think she does. Come on up. I feel like...
I was gonna say, I feel like you're just...
Oh, did you want a picture too? Oh, no? Oh, all right. So close.
One more that.
All right, one more time. All right, next up for a classified position, will Mr. Jennifer Durkey please join us?
Hi.
All right, so the individual we nominated who works with you. I have the privilege of working with Ms. Durkey at N M S, and I am consistently impressed with her dedication, positive attitude, and outstanding support for both staff and students. Ms. Durkey is always willing to lend a helping hand wherever and whenever needed. She approaches every task with a positive mindset and an eagerness to assist. Her dedication to supporting students is particularly evident. In addition to her exceptional work with students, Ms. Durkey consistently demonstrates excellent collaboration skills. She works effectively with all stakeholders, teachers, staff, and parents, always striving to create a positive and productive environment for everyone involved. Her ability to collaborate and provide thoughtful, meaningful support is truly an asset to our school community. I believe Ms. Durkey embodies the values and qualities of One Nelson Award, and I strongly recommend her for this reputation. So congratulations. We're gonna smile, and we're gonna make sure we smile. All right, last but not least for February is our certified, so will Mr. Tom Allen come up here? That's why I thought maybe you'd do there. All right, Tom Allen is the epitome of One Nelson. In the last year, he has stepped in and taken on more responsibility for the sake of the students. He truly teaches with their best interest at heart. He is not only a phenomenal teacher in the way that he presents and remediates material, but he also teaches with a sense of compassion and understanding. He helps students grasp material and will make learning relevant. His teaching strategies and work, oh, sorry, I'm just messing it up. His teach, I'm still messing it up, sorry. Teacher strategies and works well with students until they understand a concept. From a current student, and this is a quote from a current student, "He is passionate and knowledgeable." Another student says that "He helps reduce the stress of the work, plus he is fun and engaging, and he makes me feel comfortable to ask questions." Tom Allen is certainly a teacher to celebrate. Our division is better and more unified because of him and the passion that he brings to his work every day. So we want to say congratulations, thank you so much. There you go, all right. You want to stand up and take it? You want to be in this one?
Two males.
All right. It's crowded. It's like you don't have fun.
Okay, so the next one is the Difference Maker Award.
Yes, so we were actually able to celebrate Difference Maker Awards, the weeks that blended together, because we had storms in both of the weeks. But we were able to celebrate, and it's a Virginia Department of Education award, and so during National School Counseling Week, the video we acknowledges at least one counselor per region, we were able to get two slipped in there, so we're pretty excited about that, to highlight tremendous impact that school counselors have in the lives of students. Our division had two recipients for Region Five, which were Zach Wengate and Summer White. Zach is at the high school, and Summer White is at the high school and middle school, so she's that transition counselor working with our eighth graders at the middle school and our ninth graders at the high school. So we just want to say congratulations to those two individuals. We'll be recognizing our counselors in the March meeting, but we did want to recognize to everyone that that was something that we celebrated a little, a week or two ago, so wanted to make sure that we publicly announce that as well.
All right, I gotta get all that stuff in. All right, now we're on from comments from board members. Ms. Turner, Giles, you wanna start us off?
Sure. First of all, just thank you to our administrators for all of what you do. I know it is not easy with all of the weather that we have had, but I appreciate all the care and concern that you all put into making the decision of whether school is open or not. Not always a popular decision amongst all, but the fact that you put safety first is what matters, so thank you, thank you, thank you. My next comment has to go to Ms. Shannon Irvin. You know, Shannon, I don't know how many years I had to add up that I had the pleasure of hearing you talk about budget. I'm finally getting it, but it's only because of the way you take so much care in explaining it to us. I don't care if the news is good or bad, it is the right news, and it's because of you that we've been so creative with what we've been able to do with the little bit of funds that we get. So I don't know that we always acknowledge all of the hard work that you put into that, but I just wanted to say thank you. It means a lot. It means a lot to our students, it means a lot to how we are able to do all of the programming and everything that we do for Nelson. Just a personal note, I told my father that we were going over budget, and his comment was, "Oh, I hope Ms. Irvin is given the message." So everybody knows from way back when how well you have done with the budget. So thank you, thank you, thank you. On that, I will say to the public, it is not going to be an easy year for us. There are a lot of mandates, there are a lot of things that are coming down the pipe. We need your help in making sure that we hear your concerns and know that we always want to put students first in every decision that we make. So thank you as well. My final thank you goes to, back to our administration, back to our A D, back to our principal, Kevin Walker. We had a situation where we raised a concern and asked for them to support us at a particular event. Not only did they hear us, but they showed up. So I am saying thank you to you, thank you to Kevin Walker, thank you to Mr. Mullins on behalf of the parents. Your presence was not just known, but it was felt. And for that, I think our team did a whole lot better because they were able to focus on what was important. So thank you again. So thank you again. Finally, I will say to our super fans, I think you all need to ask for some uniforms because I for one see you all in everything and I'd like to see you decked out in Nelson gear. So please see Mika before you leave. Also, finally, we've got a lot of excitement in the air. I hope people are ready for, hopefully we'll play our last game, we'll see what happens. I know the boys are ready to play. We've got regional track that is coming up, so that's pretty exciting for a lot of our players, but we also have a school play. So if you haven't gotten your tickets, I know that seats are filling up, so I would encourage you to do that as well.
Sorry. Very much, Mr. Chief, your turn.
So I'm not going to run down the very long list of very deserving people that won awards through the One Nelson Awards this evening, but I do want to say a heartfelt thank you to all of you for being involved as you are, for the people that couldn't be here, for providing the turkeys and things like that. It is pretty amazing to see what our community is able to do when they come together, and it's a bunch of individuals that are working together as a team. And so I think that's pretty cool. That's something, it may not be unique anywhere in the world, but it's unique here. I mean, we, I would put what we do alongside of anybody else, what they do in any other locality, and I think it's all for the betterment of these kids. I want to thank the administration and the school principals and teachers, maintenance and transportation for all the hard work and parents for all of the patience during these cold weather events. I was just telling Ms. Turner Giles, we were walking in together and I said, "I remember way back in October when they said this was a La Niña winter and we weren't going to have anything." And here we are. So, but hopefully the worst is behind us. The next couple of weeks look like it's going to warm up, and if we can get ourselves into March, then maybe we'll be over the hump. But thank you to everybody for doing that. It is, it may not show at home, but it is unsettling to kids to be in and out, in and out of school. It certainly shows in the classroom. You take children that have been out, you know, we were out for a couple of weeks for Christmas and then we were out for a week or whatever for a storm, and so it's hard to get back up and going, but thank you to everybody for making that happen. And thank you, Ms. Irvin, for the budget presentation. This year is going to be a challenging year for sure. We have a lot of needs in our budget that need to be met. You know, we will be working with the board of supervisors to try to secure the necessary funding for this budget, but the safety, security, health, well-being, and advancement of our students is what our, those are our objectives, pretty much in that order, I think. So that's what we work for every day, and when you look inside that budget, whether it's pay raises for teachers or it's a new water line for the high school because it's, the water line's 50 or 60 years old, all of that is for the betterment of these kids. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins?
Just want to say thank you to my other two colleagues for their remarks, and they covered just about all of it. But I did have the opportunity this past Sunday to attend Black History Month program at the Bright Hope Baptist Church where they honored black leaders in the community. There were also the past and present teachers, past and present administrators, just community members that do a lot for Nelson and the things that, you know, that go unseen. And I had the opportunity to also, you know, to be there, and the program was well put together. I mean, it was a very good day for, you know, Black History Month. Everything was well coordinated, put together, things just flowed really nicely. And I just thought it was, being me, didn't want to be there, but, but, you know, after being there, I enjoyed the whole, the whole day. So just thanks to Bright Hope Baptist Church for putting that on and recognizing Black History Month and their facility.
Thank you.
Well, there's not a whole lot left for me at this point after everybody spoke so eloquently, but I would like to again give acknowledgement to Shannon. There's a reason that we call Shannon Yodam, and it's because she knows all, but, you know, the years that I've been on the board, it, like Mrs. Giles said, Ms. Turner Giles said, "The way you presented, it has made it easier." And I don't know that I'll ever fully get it to the extent that you get it, but thank you. I hope people understand the advocacy and all of the work you've done for accounting our community over the years, because I think when we talk about unsung heroes and people not seen, sometimes you're one of those, so we thank you.
No, no, sometimes she is. She is that one.
The rock. So Tammy, thank you. I know you retired, we're glad to have you back and glad to acknowledge you being back. We've missed you the one month you were gone, so don't do that again. The schools give us every year an acknowledgement for school board appreciation. They give us a packet of items that are really super meaningful and very, very special. The kids have a part in it, the administration, the staff have a part in it, and I hope when we get to the next meeting, we always feel like we're kind of a step away from saying thank you for that. So I want to acknowledge that now, that it is so special to us and you all are the reason that we do, we definitely do what we do, so thank you. The One Nelson winners. Isaac, I don't know if you even begin to realize how important that one thing you did was. We were kind of in a period where you looked at Nelson knows and you saw kind of all the chatter on Facebook. It just wasn't really super positive. And you pop in with one little act and it was an amazing thing. And so I hope you understand that that was so much bigger than just that one, that one little act, because it was so much positivity that pushed out on social media after you did that. So we never know that one thing that we do and the impact that it might have in greater places.
It's all contagious.
Yeah, absolutely. A good begets good, right? And then all the other One Nelson winners, thank you. I mean, I'm really a little concerned about the super fans that they're just not hype enough, but whatever.
We are quite quiet.
Because we got a lot of, like I think everybody said, we got a lot of unknowns coming up, right? We've got, we don't know what budgets are going to look like rolling down. We don't know things about what's going to happen to the Department of Education. I mean, there are all these things, elephants in the room, that we know very little about. The one thing we do know is that whether it's today, whether it's tomorrow, whether it's the next school year in August, we're going to have kids showing up at the building and we're going to have a responsibility that we have to take care of and we have to educate them. Not only do we have to, we want to. We want to make them good citizens. So I think if we just stay focused, a lot of that's out of our control, but just know that what you're doing is appreciated and you are creating the next generation of people that we really need to be created in a great way. We need the next Isaac.
Thank you so much. Wow. So that and cleanup here. I just want to echo everything that they said, but I cannot say it again because it would be unnecessary. I do want to, about the budget, I do want to kind of echo and accentuate what Mrs. Turner Giles said, which is, we need the public really to, to let our board of supervisors know what it is that they value about the education system here, the public school system. We don't have the ability of funding our own budget or it'd be a wholly different picture. We have to go to the board of supervisors, we have to request that they budget the money that we need, and every year it's, you know, kind of a shock and awe sort of thing, even though. At any way. Anyway, we, they don't want to hear from us necessarily, they hear from us all the time. We're having a joint meeting in March about it, but your contact with your representative, actually not even just locally, but especially local for us, but nationally and statewide as well, your voices are heard and do make an impact. And, you know, whether you're a teacher, whether you're a parent, whether you're somebody who's 17 about to vote, you know, those, your voices make a difference. So I just want you to know that and to know that we really appreciate any kind of feedback you can give us for about what your priorities are and also to the board of supervisors to support this budget. Because again, we don't know, we don't know. And then I also wanted to just, this, February is a very packed celebrating month, right? We've got School Board Appreciation Month, Career and Technical Education Month, I'm going to be reading something about Love the Bus Month, there's the clerks, there's resource officers, there's, you know, President's Day, there's like a whole bunch of stuff in February. And what I'm going to say is that it's also Black History Month. I don't think we do enough really, we should be doing this all year round, not just, I mean, it's good that February we can focus on it, and I would like to, you know, recognize and thank the black members of our community for all of their contributions to our community, our schools, our, and our, just our nation, our world. Black history is our history, and that's just what I want to say. So, that's it. I did go over a couple of the dates. There's a huge, long list. I hate to kind of say what's happening in the schools because our student representatives often do that and I don't want to say it before they get a chance to say it. So it's on there, so if you guys want to look at that. Does anybody have any questions about important dates that are coming up? Dr. Hester, would you like to emphasize anything?
I will not steal, I feel like he's not going to say the end of the third grading period. So I'm going to say it there. We do have that coming up in March. Feels like we barely had the third marking period to begin with, but we are moving forward. So, you know, we've kind of breezed through February pretty quickly, but we've got a lot coming up in March, and this is the time of year where everything gets going and then the next thing you know, it's the end of the school year, it's graduation, everybody getting excited. So we just have a few things coming up, and I will let Isaiah share the information he wants to highlight when it's...
When it's his turn? Because now it's your turn.
Yes.
Comments from superintendent?
Uh...
You want to do him first? Yeah, okay. Comments from student representatives?
So for basketball, senior night, boys' basketball cheerleader and prep band will be recognized in between the JV and Marshall games. So hopefully we'll be able to have the opportunity to play sometime soon with the weather clears Girls' basketball and cheer had their senior night last week, so congratulations to them as they have a strong finish to their season. Track had a meet where many athletes have UPRs and qualified for states. Spring sports, spring sports are getting ready to start. Their tryouts will be held on Monday, February 24th at their school. Shakespeare competition and a winter fifth third at the English speaking union Shakespeare competition at Black Friars Playhouse in St. Virginia. So congratulations to her. And the Valentine's Day fundraiser for FCC LA was a great turnout, as well as the horticulture selling flowers and this night and their English trip, students sold cupcakes. So it was overall a good turnout for the...
Thank you so much. All right, now we go back to the superintendent, comments from the superintendent.
So super comments and then go into pathways?
Yes, yes.
So I did want to emphasize, we do have newsies coming up and I was really happy to see that there's rain dates listed there. So we've posted it on Facebook, there's a QR code. If you zap that QR code, that's what takes you to be able to purchase tickets. They do a great job of really kind of digitizing that and making it pretty easy. As Isaiah said, we're coming to the end of our winter sports season, so each sport is kind of at a different phase. So you have districts and you have regions and you have states, all kind of coming together all at once at possibly the worst weather time, which is always ironic with winter sports. So it always seems to be impacted by that. I also want to say, in connection to the weather, I want to say thank you to Les Campbell and Taylor Ashley, Shannon Irvin as well. The four of us kind of make up that, that, that weather, inclement weather team. You know, Les and Taylor and I go out and drive the roads and Ms. Irvin tries to kind of, you know, keep us contained and, you know, helps craft messages and, and kind of really evaluate all of the information. And that's not easy because sometimes at 3:30, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning, at all different times, starting the night before, starting several days before. And so I just appreciate getting the perspectives of all these different departments because we impact a lot of people when we make these decisions, not just kids that stay at home, but, you know, the overall operations of an entire division, and there's a lot of components that are at stake at it. So I just want to say thank you so much. You know, we're fiercely texting back and forth and someone says, "The roads are slick." I don't know what that means. So tell me a little bit more. And so we've gotten to where we understand each other and are able to communicate and have that trust, and I really appreciate it, so thank you. So those are my, my comments. And can someone load me up? Yep, thank you. All right. So now to the fun part that I get to have, you know, we've been talking about budgets, so what I try to highlight every month are some of the things that are going on in our division that represent how we are spending our money and what we are doing with it and all the great things that are taking place. It's Ms. Irvin, so aptly summarized and provided detail into our budget. That's been something that, you know, when the governor puts the budget out, we start fiercely working on that and then pay attention to it all the way through. So a lot of time has been spent doing that. But there are other things going on, like following the bills that have been proposed and what's going through the House, and thank you so much for coming out tonight, and the Senate budgets that are developing and the different pieces of legislation that can potentially impact that locally and federally. Also while processing, getting our, heading into tax season, and also working with maintenance and other departments for bids process. Instruction is super busy. It's been a short month, but a busy, busy time. CTE month, Career, Technology, Education Month is being celebrated in February. One of, one of my favorite things to see happen is the advocacy that takes place when we take CTE students down to Richmond to be able to participate in the political sessions and advocate for themselves. So that's always a fun thing. But also, you know, highlighting some of the projects that we use for fundraising, as you can see the bench there. Instruction, also participating in professional learning and trying to promote ways of, you know, we participate in something called CIP, which provides our curriculum, support in terms of data, and just staying on top of that so we can bring that back to our kids. And on the right, you know, we really highlight career pathways and opportunities to develop the skills and knowledge to be employed. And so you see the pictures on the right of our kids participating in like the UVA internships and just doing different things to prepare them for life after high school, whatever pathway they may choose. Human resources, this is the, this is the recruiting and hiring season. We are in the thick of it. So we have Ms. Choate and Ms. Walker that go out along with other administrators to recruit all different areas, and so that's been a big point of emphasis. Going to Bridgewater, University of Virginia, we're able to reach out to a local community member who has strong ties to Virginia State University to be able to tap into some resources that maybe we haven't been able to and really expand that to be able to bring people back to Nelson. Also, really be able to diversify the individuals that we can to bring in and identify with our students. So that is a big point of emphasis for February, but also talk a little bit about I-teach. So we talk about being able to be creative and expanding our opportunities to recruit. So Ms. Choate working in and bringing in I-teach is one of those ways that we're trying to support that. Also, staff, Virginia licensure renewal manual. We transitioned from five-year licenses to 10-year licenses, and it's amazing how quickly those 10 years can go by and all of a sudden you have to try to put on all your renewal documentation, so those reminders are going out. And also attending monthly meetings where they get to listen to school board attorneys and other lawyers across the state, being able to, to find just their professional development and supporting things in a learning process there. Pupil personnel, we had kindness week, I think it was last week, well, it was two weeks ago, but then we had to do it last week because of the weather. So a lot of extra opportunities to celebrate that. We also have National School Counseling Week, February 3rd through the 7th, and as I mentioned earlier, difference makers, you see the pictures of Ms. White and Mr. Wingate being presented those awards. Also, I really love this idea, is having a sped help desk. So it's an opportunity where individuals within the special education... So, it's an opportunity where individuals within the special education and purple, and student services go into each building and spend the day there, where anybody, not just sped teachers, but general ed teachers, staff members can go in and ask questions specific to sped, or how they can work closely with their collaborative teachers, or ask questions about timelines, and IEPs, and child finds, and all of that. And it's just, it's, I think it's such a wonderful idea to be able to educate, because I think sometimes you just don't know. And when you don't know, you fill that, you fill your mind with what you think it should be, and getting the right answers, I think, is great. And I feel like it's been a big plus for a lot of our staff. Special Education Lead Meeting coming up was in February, so just continuing to keep a finger on the pulse of all things sped. Technology, as we mentioned quite a few times in our budget presentation, is the ever-increasing cybersecurity emphasis, and that is always taking place and trying to bolster our cybersecurity. Also, security in general. So, the infusion of technology with safety protocols, like through zero eyes, and making sure that we have compatible equipment to be able to do some of the things that we wanna do. And bringing in copiers and things that, just on the daily basis of being able to do our operations, is super important. Also, in the process, the fiber replacement, so continuing to work on that to upgrade our capabilities to provide this 21st century learning opportunities for our students. Maintenance Team, seems like it never ends, but Maintenance Team has worked to change up parking lot lights. Sometimes you come in for our evening events, and one of them's flickering, and it's just kind of trying to get to the point where we can replace all of those. Also, working with Honeywell to address a few HVAC issues throughout the district. Maintenance had to move food from one of our freezers at Ty River, so a big thank you to Danny Johnson, once again, coming in clutch to be able to help us move some food using Blue Dog's freezer. We also had a pre-bid conference to work on Phase Two for our high school renovation, all the while trying to navigate the installation of chillers, which is always exciting. And somehow or another, fitting in time to go look at roads and, you know, provide the safety measures through that angle. Mr. Ashley and his transportation, you know, what I really appreciate about Mr. Ashley and everyone, is always trying to think, how can we improve? How can we make this better? How can we get our information out there and communicate more clearly with everyone? So, they went and created a website, an internal website, to be able to provide staff members an easier way to get information, schedule things. So, I really appreciate that forward-thinking and trying to make it just a better way to operate. We also, and he enabled the opportunity for candidates to pass their CDL tests and kind of bringing it closer to home. So, we have two more drivers who are now able and are currently covering routes. So, we were able to train them and get, so, Kita, what was it, Guff?
Kita Goff.
Kita Goff and Desiree Mullins. So, we wanna say congratulations to them. And then also, thank you to all the substitute drivers that we have. I don't know if you know it, but, you know, January and February was kind of the creeping crud time period, and it's all encompassing. Yes. And, and it still goes on, and that's not just students, and it's not just teachers, it's bus drivers, and these people are integral. You know, when we can't get our kids to school, it's really difficult. So, I really wanna thank all those substitute drivers. Food nutrition. Short months are always difficult, because that's when they're giving out the meals, but they went and participated in the supper and summer programs and being audited and reviewed, so came through with that. Also, attended the Blue Ridge Co-op Meeting in preparation for the upcoming school year and being trained on various procedures and different opportunities for meals, as you see that lovely meal prepped for them. And then the middle picture, you see Athena Spry. She was named School Nutrition Employee of the Month for January 25th, so we wanna say congratulations to Ms. Athena. And then our numbers for January into February, seem a little bit low, because we didn't have as many days, but yet still very impressive in terms of over 8,800 breakfasts and 14,598 lunches and 304 after-school meals, because we've been providing after-school tutoring and remediation. When we do that, we provide the meals for those kids as well, if they want them. And somehow or another, able to continue our prioritization of building community engagement with the Charlottesville Cardinals. It was a wonderful event to be able to bring kids in and inspiring lessons for students playing sports with disabilities. And it was at Rockfish, and it was just such a great time to be able to see that. They've been doing it for a few years, so it's a great experience. We also have developmental screenings that have taken place. We had Kindness Week, the High School, College, and Career Day. That's also coupled with bringing in individuals from local businesses and organizations to try to talk about available jobs and skills and knowledge necessarily, necessary to be able to enter into those jobs. So, making those connections, not only to our students for a job, but local community needs. The middle school was running a ramen noodle drive, trying to be able to give back. We also had SRO Appreciation Day. It was Saturday, February 15th. I can imagine what that would have been like during the school day, being showered with the appreciation that, what they bring to the schools. We appreciate that. Parks and Rec Winter Activities were celebrated during halftime of a boys' varsity basketball game, and it was really great. I believe it also coincided with when one of our players got their 1,000th point, so there was a lot of community there, not only to celebrate the Parks and Rec kids, but also to celebrate that moment for Colton. Yes, Ward, yes, right? Yes, okay. Second and fourth grader students were, had a visit from George Flickinger. So, I should have been over there picking his brain while he was teaching our kids about the weather and meteorology. And he posted one of the pictures where he was out front with this like big block of snow iced that had been pushed off to the side, so I thought it was kind of ironic. But also, a great representation for the community coming out for Bingo Night. So, we just appreciate all the schools' efforts in trying to not only promote themselves, but also to engage and bring in the community. Through Ty River, one of their squads, we're also looking to reach out into our communities and have community meetings with various members to try to see how we can best support our students and expand that. And then Love the Bus Month is February, so we wanna say we love the bus and the transportation and everything that they provide. And also, we had School Counselor Week, so we put out some community messages about our counselors. So, we just wanna say thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. I don't wanna take my-
Thank you so much, goodness gracious. That's a good. Now, we have comments we, from the public. Is there anybody on the list? I'm guessing no, because they would stand up, wouldn't they? All right, no comments from the public. And I, it's my idea, so you guys can be mad at me, but I want, I don't wanna release the public from the meeting to just go home until after the superintendent has her chance to talk about all the stuff that happens in one month at the schools, because I think that, I mean, it just blows me away about how much stuff goes on, and usually she's at everything, so. But, having said that, if you guys wanna go, it's a big time. If you're not gonna go, thanks for sticking around for the rest of it. So, we're at the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions about any of that? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, no opposed or abstained, we have approved the consent agenda. Now, we go into items for information, the first being, as normal, the meeting minutes from January 9th meeting. If you have any changes, modifications, whatever, just let our lovely clerk know so we can make changes. Second one is the request for resolution requesting the board of supervisors to issue general obligation bonds for school purposes. Do we need to talk about that? Does anybody, I mean, this-
I don't think so.
We don't, okay, all right, so, all right. Then we will have from Mr. Campbell, an update on the capital improvement plan projects.
Okay, so, lots of things going on with the renovations. I will start by talking about the final chiller that has arrived. It got delayed a couple times due to the weather, so we, it was delivered last Thursday. With that said, we didn't wait, the best did not wait for the last. We've had some issues with that chiller. It's, that's the inside chiller goes inside. It's a height issue. As a matter of fact, when they delivered it, they took the tarp off. I took a picture and I sent to Mandy and Shannon, and I said, "This is the new chiller, but it's big." Turns out, it's too big. They finally got it inside the first set of double doors. They put it on the rollers. When they tried to roll it back through the mechanical room to the back room, it hit the ductwork. So, been talking to Honeywell. Of course, there's a lot of this going on right now, finger pointing. So, reached out to, first they said they bid it off the specs that Mosley provided. Mosley, we reached out to them yesterday, and this is what, in the email, they stated that what they provided was generic specs, and that Mosley did not make selections or develop any coordination drawings. Mosley also said that those efforts were on Honeywell to coordinate and complete their turnkey installation. So, I say all this, so, yesterday, a change order has been proposed, nothing official yet, with they're bringing in a subcontractor, they being Honeywell's bringing in a subcontractor to remove the ductwork. And the door to the back room where this chiller goes is too small, too. So, they have to remove the lintel, the door frame, and a course of cinder block. So, the numbers were presented to me yesterday, nothing official, it was a guesstimate, change order in the amount of $15,000 to $20,000 to do the alterations to get this chiller in.
Who would be paying the-
So, as of right now, we haven't, I sent everything that I received from Mosley to Honeywell, and I hadn't heard anything back yet. That was as of today, this morning. Mosley has supplied us with some information, with the scripts of how they sent to Honeywell to bid on, to use as a generic spec. Again, there was, and then to top that all off, Carrier sends out a representative, this is a Carrier chiller. They send out a rep to, before they even start building the chiller, to make sure that it all, it goes where it's supposed to. They even missed it. So, it's between, in my opinion, it's between Honeywell and Carrier.
I agree. And usually, I mean, I don't think I've ever seen one that didn't have it, but there's usually language in all of these contracts that says, "The contractor shall field verify all measurements."
Yeah, so-
This is not Honeywell's first rodeo either.
No, it is not. It's not likely to work there all the time.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and then, so, Mosley did provide some of that in a follow-up email of the section of specs, and it pretty much said close to what you just said. So, that is still in development stages right now.
And that was the first thing we did?
Oh, and they're cross-shopping right now. They're throwing out a number to try to get negotiated, so.
Yeah, so, the first thing we did was to contact Mosley and say, they're indicating they read you, they read off what you gave us. You need to, you need to see what was given, what were happened. And they responded, Mosley responded very quickly.
They did, they did.
Yeah, you gotta go through the incident and then-
Yeah, we haven't got to the point where we're dancing yet. It's just, we've been sending emails this point. We haven't sent them face-to-face to talk yet. That's coming, but we will continue to hash this out.
Well, thank you for staying on that.
Absolutely.
But the unit itself is correct, it's just getting it where it needs to be?
Yes, so, it's, well, the unit, the new unit is actually taller than the old unit. So, that's, that's the problem.
Right, but once it's in place, is there any-
Yes, all of that, yes. Once that's-
Just remember, 50 years down the road, you're gonna have to pull it out again, so.
Right, it's gotta come back out.
Yeah.
And I've provided a few pictures, as you can see, where the unit actually fits the ductwork. So, they're planning on taking out that section of ductwork. They started cutting the door frame out. They haven't removed the lintel yet. They started doing that this week. Next Tuesday's the day that they're gonna bring in the sheet metal guys to cut the ductwork and finish taking the block out, the lintel out, to roll the chiller to the, back to the back room. So, this one has been, out of all the four chillers that we have replaced, this one has been a doozy.
This is the one that was delayed so long, too, right?
It was, yep.
It's not done with you yet, Les.
No, it's not done. It's, it's still there, and it's let me know that. Good news is, some of the other stuff that's going on is the air compressors in the CTE wing has been installed and they're operational. The four gym units that were replaced at the high school are now, they've been crossed over, so they're now on the front-end system, tied, all tied into the EBI system. And Honeywell has also finished installing the new circulating pumps that also go with that water-cooled chiller. There's a picture there, they've done a neat job on that.
They look good.
The renovation, we had, we had a, as Mandy said, we had a pre-bid conference on February 3rd. There was four total contractors. I'd like to see a few more. But we've had numerous follow-up meetings since then, because the bids are due next Tuesday at 2:00. So, we've had numerous follow-up walks with them. The other day, actually, there was more folks that showed up for a follow-up walk than originally showed up for the pre-bid subcontractors. So, it does seem like all the ones that showed up seemed to be interested in it, so that's a good thing. And then the high school, the elevator modernization, that is finally starting to take place. They're coming out next week. We're doing a site visit, we're gonna look at every, all of the aspects of it. It originally gave me a schedule of late April, early May. I reached back out, dated, sent an email, just my concerns about doing that during, while school's still in session. I don't think we need to take the elevator down during that period of time. So, I recommended we wait it to the end of May. I hadn't heard anything back prior to the meeting, so hopefully I hear something back and we can push that out until at least after school's out, so.
And this is gonna be new car and new controls?
So, new controls, you basically see the same cart, but it's upgrade on the hydraulics and the controls. As a matter of fact, we had to put a new disconnect inside. It's gotta have a battery-powered in feature for the new carts. We have nothing like that now.
Right.
And we also had to install a small mini-split in that area, because they've had to have it designated, its own designated HVAC. So, we've got all that, we've got the mini-split in place. I'm going, I'm trying to get the disconnect installed during Phase Two of the renovations, so. Yep.
It's a good call to get that pushed out. Do we know if we have anybody from an ADA standpoint that has to use that elevator daily? Because that's, that's a game changer. They can't do it if-
Right, right, yeah. And the point is, even if we don't right now, we will-
We might.
We have, we might.
Yeah, that's right.
So, yeah, so that's-
Good call.
The roof, leak in the roof where the air conditioner was, has that been-
Yes, so, we've, we've done, we went up and done a lot of sealing, and around the unit itself, cut out some old caulking, put some new caulking in, and this last round of rain we had, which was a couple inches, we had no issues, so I'm knocking it off with it. We did unfortunately have a, an incident that happened a couple weeks ago. Honeywell was installing a motor in one of our units, on the gym unit, and they dropped the motor, and it put a hole in the roof, so.
Oh, my God.
Honeywell's batting a thousand.
They, they're paying for that. I, we called Escola out, the roofing company that did the project. They patched it and told them they could just make the bill out to Honeywell, so.
And we wound up having to call the units ourselves, the flotting on the units.
Yes.
I thought that was in the contractor with the roof.
So, they, they took it up to the point, to the unit, and then they, they said that the unit was not on them. So, we, we took it upon ourselves to go up. But the, now, the rep, the Garland rep come out, he was a big help. He come out and he actually took a garden hose and sprayed the unit down to help us locate the areas. So, it wasn't Escola, it was Garland Company, manufacturers that they're rep out, and he actually helped us locate those, so.
Garland was a good partner through that process.
I think so.
They were.
I mean, we, I know you in the beginning, we're not sure, because nobody really worked with them, but they've been a good partner.
They have. Brian has been a good rep to us.
And they said they would be with us before, during, and after, so.
They, they stand by, absolutely. Any other questions?
Thank you, Les.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you, Les. Ms. Rudiner is not-
Rudiner. Yes, I will be taking her information. Give me a second. All right, so.
I see her every day, I mean, every time I see her, I may try not to do it wrong.
So, I'm not going to go step-by-step through this presentation, other than to, we've talked about the support of behavioral interventions. In particular, we currently have one of our current psychologists out on leave. current psychologists out on leave, maternity leave, and so, we have a part-time psychologist who works with us, but we are in need of another full-time. So, as I mentioned before, there's difficulty in finding these individuals to be able to provide those services for our students. This is just a little bit of kind of data that supports why we're in need of a full-time, but we have posted vacancies for the school psychologists, we've had consultations with local universities to try to find individuals to fill this spot surrounding divisions. I mean, we are kind of combing around to try to find individuals to be able to do this. And it's just, it's a, it's a very shallow well to dip into, because everybody's trying to. But you can't just get anybody for a position like this, and so, we have to either get individuals or contract through organizations that support certain expectations and requirements that we have. Confidentiality is one of our biggest ones, but also the ability to get that data, maintain that validity of evaluation results, the impact, you have to choose the right connections and the impact that they have on our students, the requirements on NCPS staff to support the implementation of evaluations, and we're heading into a season where we start to see all of those increase. And so, the results of the RFP, we, one, if we can find individuals to do this, but two, what are the price points for it? So, we, like I said, we currently have a school psychologist contracted through PREP, Piedmont Regional Education Program, so, we, we work through them to be able to find that. We placed an RFP and a panel interviewed, really time-intensive to be able to interview individuals, but we would like to propose going with parallel learning. One, they kind of hit the, the mark with our expectations and requirements and criteria, but also we were able to negotiate an agreement and get a mid-range price point at twelve-fifty down from ten thousand. So, we were able to find this group to be able to provide that, we have an ability to add more evaluations if needed to be able to do this. So, parallel learning has access to the various rating scales, checklists, and protocols that we use, and they have the ability to provide a psychologist when NCPS requires that service. It will be virtual, though, to find the physical beings to bring in to Nelson County is just so difficult, particularly with our, with our ability to hit that price point. But this is a group that I think we feel like is going to be able to commit to, you know, eight psychological evaluations, and with the flexibility to add more to that. So, this is something that we're educating you and providing information on about a direction that we would like to go in. It's just difficult, it's difficult to find the actual people to be able to do this, but it's a need that our students have, so with a lack of actual someone being able to come in, this is the next best step. It's a step that the state is really trying to encourage people taking with a vacuum of individuals.
And all of these bidders are virtual?
Many of them, not, maybe not all.
I mean, all the ones on this list.
Yes. So, I think these are the things that they have to offer, I think if we could have a, a full-time person in our buildings constantly, that'd be fantastic. Our fantastic psychologist is just on leave right now, so this is also our temporary fix to that.
Well, it's good that you found something.
Yes, that is exciting.
I'm surprised that there were three options, actually, so, instead of just like one option, so...
Yes.
And how long, did I miss the part for how long the contract will be if we get in and feel like this is not working?
So, I, I think it's throughout the end of the school year, correct? It's, it's, it's to...
The commitment for the semester.
It's a, it's a stopgap for, while we have our current psychologist on leave.
Okay.
Correct, I'm saying that, yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is not a permanent fix, although, let's be honest, if things, you never know.
Right.
You never know the direction, so this is also a great kind of introduction and potential relationship, if we need additional services that go beyond what we can do.
So, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around all of these things, they do comprehensive assessments, they're providing services two days a week, it says, under the contract, right?
I think with the...
Virtual, virtual.
Current, virtual, yes.
Right, okay. So, but they can do intervention...
If they can do, I believe they can do more services upon need, I think we have to kind of communicate with them, but they're not coming into the building.
No, I understand, but I mean, they would have somebody available if we...
Think they have some flexibility.
Intervention services or whatever.
And, and again, we also have a part-time person that does come in, so, we have that individual, which would probably be more readily to have that access to them.
Okay. Just trying to get my bearings.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have the calendar.
Yes.
Okay. You need different hats.
I mean...
So, every time you come up...
I do, I do. All right, so it's that time of year, again, it's the instructional calendar. We, I think it was in the last school board meeting, Ms. Douglas was able to kind of just indicate, had been sent out or made available surveys. The process, I want to press pause before we dig into the survey that got the most votes, because one of the confusing things about when you build an instructional calendar, one of the things we get is like, you know, what about my vacations? This is an instructional calendar, so how do we build that? One, we take in the considerations and criteria that, that are contributed to us and prioritized, but also, the state has certain requirements on time, so you can either have a hundred and eighty days or nine hundred and ninety hours. We target the hours. So, what constitutes these hours? You build it off of the school day that is the shortest, that is our elementary schedule, it is six and a half hours. The school day is actually seven, but you can't count lunch, so we build it off of six and a half. Fun fact, not all school divisions or schools have the same length of day, same calendar timing-wise, or same number of days. So, sometimes we hear, well, you know, this school division has to add time to the school year, or this division, why do they have these days off? Why don't we have those days off? And so, that, that is a unique nature, because when you build your schedule, you build it to the needs and wants of your school division. And so, this past school year, we had, we had planned for a hundred and seventy-six days, so that was gonna be eleven hundred and forty-four hours. So, we've had a few closures, a few remote learning, but we have a long day. And one of the reasons why we have a long day is, yes, we have transportation, we have a single run where our elementary, and our middle, and our high school are on the same buses, and so you have to adjust those, that day, to meet each other, but we also live in an area that is pretty precarious when it comes to the weather, and a lot of needs that we have to kind of navigate to be able to build in time for. And then, the accountability system, making sure that we are providing the instruction and the support and the services to our students that we feel is necessary in order to try to be as successful as we can possibly be. And I say all that, just sometimes, it's, it's not as simple as we'll just, you know, put the days in and let's go. But we, we do build it off of this, because usually when we present the calendar, there's always someone furiously mathing to see how many hours and how many days, and what does that equate. So, I always just try to say, hey, this is what we build it off of, and so when we have remote, we have closed days, or we have remote learning days, FYI, right now, we still are well above the nine hundred and ninety hours, even with these closures, the way we built our calendar, the way we've built things, we're still well above. So, I've spoken, other superintendents are adding time to the day, because they're not at, they won't be at nine ninety. So, it's just, it's a very interesting situation. So, I say all that to say, we've been working towards building our instructional calendar, and we've had staff calendar survey, community calendar survey, student survey, all that to help draft out. We had four options, I'm not gonna go through all four of our options, because there was a distinct popular one, and you have access to the four options, but draft number one was, and that's what you see projected there, was the clear winner in terms of selections, and I say clear winner, I think it was, it was like forty-six percent, and the next closest was twenty-seven. So, pretty clear winner, and some of the things that went into play when people were selecting their choice was the beginning and end dates for students, also staff, take that into account, instructional planning days, planned asynchronous learning dates, and then just some other things that go into it. One of the questions that we posed this year is the consideration of a transition day, so we don't have it necessarily completely reflected in that calendar. We have on selection one, August twelfth as the start day, which is a Tuesday, feedback that we've been provided by parents and staff is, please don't start on that Monday, but we don't want to start the week before, and, but we want to get out before winter break, and we want to have our school year finished before Memorial Day, and we want two weeks at winter break, and we want a week at spring break, but that little tail or head of that extra day for Easter, or, you know, the Friday before, we want that also, and we want these holidays, and we like these asynchronous days that we gotta taste of. So, I say all that to say that it takes a little bit of massaging to be able to make all of this work, and the fun part about this is where the holiday falls can really create bigger challenges. Last year, easy, eighty-eight, eighty-eight, no problems, everything fits. This year, just kind of where things lie, it makes it a little bit more challenging to get in everybody's selections. One of the other things, feedback that we get is, is the timing of, you know, we have a teacher workday the Monday before report cards go out, in the, in the Monday after the end of a marking period, because that's when teachers are able to make sure that they get everything done and ready to close out that, that grading period, and then get ready for the report cards and get ready to start that next. So, that time, well, you know, there's a certain amount of days that we have in our marking period, so that, there's not tons of flexibility with that, but we also want these asynchronous days, but we also have parent-teacher conferences that we're trying to coordinate, because it's really difficult to have those long nights when we had kids all day. So, I say all this to say that a lot of thought and planning goes into this, and see what you see here is you see a August twelfth start date, I started to talk about a transition day, which is a really interesting concept, where there's that first day where you bring in your pre-K and your kindergartners at the elementary level, and you get the layout of the land of how things work, and you're really able to introduce the, the young ones and to the teachers and get them familiar with everything, and the parents kind of feel a little bit better. But you also have that for your sixth graders, they're starting at a new school at the middle school. They get the layout of the building. If you ask kids what in the middle and the high school, what one of their biggest fears is, it's getting lost. It isn't how hard the class is, it isn't what time is lunches, I don't want to get lost. And so, these opportunities for the pre-K and K, sixth and ninth, would give them an opportunity to get in there a day ahead of time, get the layout of everything, get the, the rules, you know, the expectation meetings, and, you know, find sometimes a trusted adult right away to be able to, to be able to work with. So, that is something that we're kind of putting out there, is, it had, it had a pretty good response, but I think it's the implementation of it and how that works. I know that I've spoken to people in some other school divisions, and, and may have been leery at first, but having seen it play out, they really like how it works. But I, I get back, we have a start date of August twelfth, we have the first marking period ending on the, the tenth of October, and currently have an asynchronous day on the thirteenth, and professional development on the twentieth. We kind of get mixed feedback about having a teacher workday and a professional development day back-to-back, so it shortens that week. We have some people who like that, and some others like, no, I'd rather not have it back-to-back. So, unfortunately, sometimes, when you have to make decisions, someone's, someone's choice isn't always gonna be there, but we do the best we can to kind of bring it together. November, we, we still have the fourth off, but due to the timing-wise and making sure we get enough days in the first and second semester, the reason why that's important is balancing out for the high school, they're on a four-by-four, so their, their class ends in that first semester, so we really want to make sure that we even it out as best we can, because it, it really gets difficult to manage when it's not, not close. Election day on the fourth, because where everything falls and getting those extra days and starting later in August, not really able to give that third, the November third off. That's just how things fall. When you start in that midweek in August, you, there's gonna be a give and take a little bit. We have, again, the three days built in for Thanksgiving, we have the two weeks built in for winter break, also providing instructional planning and professional development coming out, so that means it's a, it's not a full week for teachers or students with kids coming out of winter break, which is always something that's passed along as a want. We have MLK Day on the nineteenth, we have President's Day on the sixteenth of February, we have, again, async day, so this calendar, we're only planning to have two async days, not three. Just again, if we start later in August, we're just not able to build some of those things in, but we're trying to, to kind of build in more time in other places. We have spring break falling, one of the questions we asked, do you want it before or after Easter? The resounding information that we got back, let's have it, the sixth through the tenth timeframe. And then, having graduation set for the fifteenth, the last day of school set for the twenty-second, so that brings us to eighty-seven and eighty-eight, that'd be a hundred and seventy-five days. Our people who want to do some math, a hundred and seventy-five times six and a half is a hun, is eleven hundred and thirty-seven point five hours. So, again, that builds in, we were at eleven forty-four, eleven thirty-seven, that's one day difference, that builds in quite a bit of time and flexibility to, to be able to work with and be able to provide the support we need. So, I hope that adequately explains the, kind of the process, it's complicated, unfortunately someone's feelings get hurt, because we can't always accommodate every single thing, but we do the best we can with taking all the information into account. So, we want to present that with the hopes of moving forward with the calendar, I believe, next, that's our first reading of it, and we need it next March, correct? March approval? I'm looking at you. Yes, that's, that's, that's the plan. Any questions?
I feel good that we didn't have to pre-bid.
Yes, yes.
All right, any questions? Let's keep on rolling. So, the lasting items for information is the proclamation for Love the Bus Month 2025, whereas...
Can I interrupt?
You wanna interrupt?
Can, can we have Mr. Ashley?
Oh, yes. Are you kidding me? Come on.
He is excited about it.
I know, I can tell.
He's been asking about it all day long. When do I get to do this?
I saw the daggers flying out of his eyes toward you.
It's really an act to follow after the whole calendar thing. Really, it is, but we're gonna make this short and sweet. So, the National Association for People Transportation is an organization that obviously supports school buses. So, they've developed, or kind of spearheaded this movement of declaring February being Love the Bus Month. I know last year we signed the proclamation, so basically, we're gonna ask again if we can, Nelson County Public Schools will designate February as Love the Bus Month. So, as the proclamation reads, whereas the yellow school bus, or do you want me to read it, or would you all like to? Because I'm fine if you wanted to, I don't want to take your...
I am, you have a spot?
I can tell, so, here. Whereas the yellow school bus is among the most recognized icons of American schools in society, and whereas school buses make up the largest mass transit system in the United States, and whereas research demonstrates that the yellow school bus is the safest mode of transportation for some twenty-six million American schoolchildren each day, and whereas yellow school buses are built to exacting federal and state safety specifications, and school bus drivers are provided rigorous training, preparation, and testing to ensure the safety of our children, and whereas the yellow school bus provides access to education and learning for children who live in rural, suburban, and urban areas, including children who present with special needs, and whereas the yellow school bus enhances the educational experience by providing access to extracurricular activities such as field trips and sporting events, and whereas the yellow school bus contributes to improving our environment by reducing the number of vehicles that must be on the road to get our children to school each day, and whereas the women and men who manage and operate local school transportation systems are dedicated to the safety of all children and the, and to ensure efficiency and accountability in the delivery of school transportation services. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Nelson County School Board recognize the vital role that the yellow school bus plays in our education enterprise and in the life of our district, and be it further resolved that the Nelson County School Board declares the month of February 2025 to be Love the Bus Month in Nelson County Public Schools. And we call upon our students, our families, our faculty and staff, and our community to recognize the work that our school transportation team and all that they contribute to the well-being of our students. And we call upon our students, our families, our faculty and staff, and our community to recognize the work that our school transportation team and all that they contribute to the well-being of our students.
It would have made me cry to read that, so I'm glad you did it. Okay, now, items for action. Who's got their motions ready? Everybody ready? First, we need a motion to approve the resolution to request the Nelson County School Board issue general obligation bonds for school purposes.
I move that we approve the resolution to request Nelson County School Board issue general obligation bonds for school purposes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Now we need to have a, a motion to approve the bid for temporary psychological services.
I did get clarification that it is a significant amount to, to help us with our testing.
Also, so I think you asked a question, it's like, okay, what all, it is, will be a super support to us getting evaluations and testing done. So I wanted to make sure I appropriately provided that information.
So I also kind of want to point out, if there's one of these items for action that we need to have a roll call vote on for documentation, let me know. Because, I mean, so far it's been unanimous, but, you know, I mean, everybody's voting aye. But just in case, we just need to make sure we do what we're supposed to do. All right, okay, so I need a motion for B.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended parallel learning as the vendor to provide temporary psychological services to Nelson County Public Schools.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay. Now we need a, a motion to approve the overnight field trip for Nelson Middle School, Nelson High School FFA to attend state block and bridal contest, which.
I do think that was just recently postponed.
Oh, was it?
March 15th and 16th.
Okay.
So you want to approve it now and change the dates?
We need to amend the dates.
Yeah.
I'll move that we approve the overnight field trip for FFA to attend state block and bridal March 15th.
And 16th.
So, in the 16th.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition or abstention? Okay, the next one is the motion to approve the field trip for gifted students to visit the Virginia Aquarium and Marine Science Center and Whale Watching Center on April 2nd, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition or abstention? We need a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for gifted students on March 28th to Washington DC.
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for gifted students on March 28th, 2025 to Washington DC.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition or abstention? We need a, we need a motion to approve the middle school, high school, FCC LA overnight field trip to Virginia Beach for state FCC LA conference on April the 3rd through the 6th.
I move we approve Nelson Middle School, Nelson High School, FCC LA to take an overnight field trip to Virginia Beach for the state FCC LA conference on April 3rd and through the 6th, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstention? Hearing none? Good. And so do we need to go into closed session?
Uh, personnel.
Can I, are you looking for it? It's on here, it's on here.
No, it's not.
It isn't?
No. Give me a second to get the motions.
Here, I bet it's in an old meeting, let me look it up.
I got it. Okay, we need to go into personnel?
Yeah.
I move that the board go into closed session to discuss and consider the personnel report and other confidential personnel matters as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-37AA, 3711A1 for purposes of discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public bodies, appointees, or employees of any public body.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in closed session. Thank you, everybody.